Mayor Winberg, President Saggy is mayor. Therefore, we need to elect a presiding officer for tonight's meeting. Are there any nominations? I'd like to nominate Alderman Cacerino.
I'm spoken.
Are there any further nominations? Nominations will be closed. All in favor of Alderman Cacerino, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
(inaudible) Okay, the first order of business would be the minutes of the previous meetings.
Would be acceptable. Second.
Then move this second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Okay, at this time, it's opportunity to address the board on matters that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone outside the rail that would like to address the board at this time? On matters that are not on the agenda? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Michael Vick. I reside at Five Jan Avenue in Rutland City. I'm here as president of Rutland City School Board. I know that most of you are aware, you've gotten communications from Mayor Winberg indicating that our taxing request for this year is $8,750,000. I'm only going to make a couple of brief comments about it. Obviously, the school board is available and interested in the education committee, wants to sit down and talk with us about our budget at any time. We'll be more than willing to do that. Two things that are important. Firstly, in the mayor's letter, there's a reference. The city's budget has been put together with a too large a planned increase in the city grand list. And that may or may not be true, but that really doesn't come into play in the school's budgeting process. Our job is to determine how many dollars we need to operate the school system. Once we do that, we make the request that we've made to the mayor, and that's that $8, 750,000 figure. What the grand list is will help determine how many pennies on the tax rate will be required to raise that sum. So whether we're high this year or low last year, I don't think it's critical to that process, but it is there. What's most important, when the school board went about its budget process since February, our goal was to hold as close to a flat 1.20 and 1/2 cent tax rate as we had this past year. Based on the state aid figures, last year, $142 million was placed in state aid in Montpelier. This year, the proposal to level fund that was in place. There was lots of discussion, particularly in the House, about reducing that. But the bottom line was, several weeks before the legislature adjourned, it was apparent that they were going to level funds state aid to a $142 million figure. What that means is the data from our school district, our average daily membership, the cost of operation, busing, things like that are plugged into the formula. And because of our increases in students, et cetera, we would have seen a reallocation of that $142 million. It would have netted the city of Rutland $244,000 in additional state aid over what we got last year. At the last minute, in unbeknownst to our city school board, the legislature twisted where we're plugged in the current use proposal and tied that into state aid. What that basically did was reduce, reallocated aid again, but it reallocated to the point that instead of getting $244,000 in additional state aid, we're only getting $20,000. So it's true, the legislature says, "We didn't lose money." What they're really talking about is we didn't lose state aid relative to what we got last year. But if the current use proposal had not been passed, and it was approved, I believe unanimously and with full support of the Rutland delegation, the city of Rutland would have received an additional $224,000. Had we received that, our tax rate increase would have been, our taxing request would have been decreased by the neighborhood of 3 and 1/4 cents. So to the best of our abilities, we did our job. But again, in this situation, the twist was thrown in at the last moment, and it's my judgment, and you have a letter from the superintendent that seconds that feeling, the legislature, when they passed the current use proposal, did not even know what the repercussions of that vote would be. Because it was a full 10 days after the legislature adjourned that all the figures could be fed into the computer, and the individual communities found out what their resources were going to be. So that's where we sit. We offer to meet with the education committee if there are any questions regarding our budget. But that's the situation as we see it. Any questions, I can answer now.
Questions? Who's the chairman of the education committee this year?
I don't know.
Sam?
If you need us, you know where to thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Okay. Next order of business would be the appointment to Rutland Condon Sella Way. And there's a letter in your packet from Tricia Means, who states that she will not be accepting the appointment. It is your pleasure with that letter.
Move, receive and place on file.
Second.
Okay. No, sorry. Shall we remove the table first, or table these last time?
Yeah, let's, I'll just review your motion for a moment on order.
Motion to receive, or remove from the table.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, as I stated, Tricia Means has written us a letter stating why she would not be accepting the appointment. Now, it is your pleasure, Alderman Stafford.
Move the table, the appointment.
Would you? Place on file, I think I'm going.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, all those in favor, receive and place on file.
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Second, we have another appointment, the Rutland City Planning Commission, it's Peter Giancola.
Circulate the ballot box.
I think, okay.
Got to remove from the table.
I think we have to remove that also. No, we just got that one. Okay, your motion, Alderman Grueser, to remove from the table.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Move to circulate the ballot box.
Second. Remove the second, and circulate the ballot box. I'll ask the clerk to do so at this time. Please, could you verify that, please?
Six yes, one no.
By a motion, a vote of six yes and one no, Mr. Giancola has been approved. Okay, next order of business would be the FY 1997 budget. At this time, I'll turn it over to City Treasurer Graves.
Bear with me while I pass these out. While I'm doing this, I'll try to, you find the format, very familiar to what you had last year. Dr. Vick, we're moving to the mayor's letter of transmittal. There is a letter of transmittal included from the mayor. The mayor was back in town, came back Sunday, moved up today, we go back down to Florida. I'll keep, John, I'll keep yours. Rosemary has one for the, for the record. And David, yours for here. That leaves three. I'll make sure Alderman Gill, Zatowski, and Clifford get copies of their budgets credited through. I'm trying to, I'm not going to read the mayor's letter of transmittal. I'll let you read that, but I'll try to give you a little highlight of what's in here, other than the mayor's transmittal. Most importantly, I think it's for everybody's knowledge to know, combined with the school board, in this budget, this budget does represent a tax increase to the residents of the city of Rutland. We'll put that right up front. This budget is a legal budget, as submitted to you this evening. That is a 3 cent increase over last year for general city purposes. It's premature to top tax rates, and I'll qualify that. Tax rates are set July 20th. You have the role of the board of aldermen to cut this budget. You have the setting of the grand list prior to July 20th that has an impact on what the tax rate is. A lot of us get caught up with what taxes are going to be, but really, it is premature to discuss that. I'm not trying to hide anything here. This budget represents, as submitted to you, with the school budget and the general fund budget, it does represent a tax increase. To what level, how many cents it's going up, I can't tell you that. I'm saying that, the reason is, we have not closed the books as of June 30. We do not know what the surplus is. We do not have a finalized grand list figure. Those two items affect the tax rate. The mayor has certainly outlined in his letter of transmittal certain concerns and highlights as far as what he has done. Due to the circumstances with the passing of his father, it is certainly his wish to work with this board through your committee process to discuss openly any part of this budget and try to impact, or have an impact on any potential tax rate. The mayor suggested in his letter that this has a 10 cent increase. It is his desire, I believe, on the last page, and in his words, "Doubly, given the magnitude of the projected tax increase, I urge the board to redouble your efforts to seek any and all opportunities for saving." And he wants me to express certainly to you this evening, that is his desire. I think, like I said, I'm not going to read the letter. There are certain areas in here that have been highlighted as far as what's in this budget. We did, there are some, one positive side, that's the increases or decreases in our insurance package via workers' comp and comprehensive insurance. The salaries in this budget represent for union increases, a high of 3.3 for the police union to a 2.7 for Department of Public Works police union. There's a 3 percent cost of living adjustment for non-union employees within this budget. Going through the format, it's very similar to last year. Page one, page two are your revenues. Remaining pages are your appropriations budget. The biggest change in this budget is the recreation budget. You will see in here, and don't be confused with it, you're going to see two sets of accounts. You're going to see accounts 121. Those are the account, old account numbers for recreation. You will not, there will be all zero in the proposed budget. Your next, your succeeding pages are accounts 122. Those are new recreation department budgets. For once, you're going to see a total expenditure for the recreation department, offset by a total revenue budget for the recreation department. So in the mayor's letter of transmittal, he tries to explain that in the first two paragraphs. Don't be alarmed when all of a sudden you see a recreation budget of over $900,000 as compared to last year of just over $600,000. The reason for that is you are seeing total expenditures. Previous years, you were, you were, you have received a net budget. You're not getting that this year. It's a totally new format. And we will certainly walk you through that in your recreation committee when you meet on this budget. And I think it's, it will be self-explanatory when we get into it. I've also included in here is a list of the committee assignments, breaking out the budget by committee. I only have one that I need to bring up that I'm not sure of, and that's the purchasing budget. Right now, it's under finance committee. In your charter and ordinance committee, it's the purchasing. I have received a preliminary draft of that RFP that went out, in its desire of peish and peish, to present that to the charter and ordinance committee. And I didn't know whether you wanted to change that, or have the purchasing go into the charter and ordinance, or under finance. So that's the only change I've really requested on your list of. And they'll meet with your committee and go through their RFP that you submitted, the final report, which is tied into this budget also.
Just as point of interest, as chairman of the planning committee, I think the charter and ordinance has been dealing with this right along.
It has. It's listed under finance, but it probably should go to charter and ordinance. Charter and ordinance in the past, it's not, as a committee, did not review any portions of the budget. So if you want to mark that as a change, I have no problem with that going to charter and ordinance. Again, we have until my charter, June 30, to pass this budget. My office will certainly coordinate if you would. Committee chairmen, give us a call. We'll set up your meetings. We'll send out your notices for you. All we need to know is what is going to happen. There is one committee meeting already set. Alderman Clifford called me. He has called a meeting for until June 12 at 6:15 at Dana for the rect department committee.
Chair, if I could request, I think just because of the concerns that we have with the increased budget and the circumstances that occurred, I think, as David was quoted in the Herald, that most of the time when we get the budget, it is pretty bare bones. And we've had, we've made some cuts and some adjustments. And I guess what I'm requesting is that all board members are notified of all committee meetings dealing with the budget. So if we wish to partake in a committee meeting that we are not members of, that we would have that opportunity. So I would request that.
That way, we'll certainly, well, I need to know, it's my office. It's just for the committee chairman here, we'll do the posting, and we'll notify everybody by mail when the committee hearings are. If I could follow up with that, I think it's, this budget has been looked at. It is pretty much bare bones, but I think it's time that we start living within our means. And I think that's what the mayor is trying to tell you, and I'm trying to tell you, that everything on this, in this budget is on the table for discussion. When you start looking at a 10 cent impact to the tax rate, it is time to live within our means. About what I'm saying.
Was there any, you guys did some cutting evidently, you and the mayor.
We did some cutting. We did some extraordinary cutting this year, and I'll be glad to share it with this board. For once, we finally look at the department heads and said, "Hey, guys, if your percentage of spending is less than 40 percent, why are you level funding your budget next year? The same dollar amount you have this year?" And they were cutting. There are some increases in this budget, extraordinary items. You've obviously enhanced 911. You'll find in your emergency management budget, account number 64, there's money in there to implement your emergency 911 at the fire park. That goes into effect under state law next July 1. So we needed money in this budget this year. That budget basically provides us the construction cost and the improvement of 911 from this building to the fire park. And that's roughly $57,000. That's a net figure, because you're getting $25,000 from the state in order to accomplish that. That's basically the only new item in here. You have items of capital outlay that are in here, that we've pulled up through years, that have been requests from Department of Public Works, that are significant dollars. It's also probably important to not just look at the general fund, but also look at your water fund, your sewer fund, and your parking meter fund. I think part of the parking meter fund, outside of the requests we've gotten, minimal requests we've gotten from the traffic community, some cutbacks significant, water and sewers probably need to be looked at in conjunction with revenues. Water fund, very quick glance at it as far as water rates, sewer disposal rates, water rates probably do not, do not have to go up. Sewer disposal rates probably do have to go up. It probably should be discussed in the Department of Public Works committee. And I'm talking to Warren Connor. That certainly will be requested, it's going to be coming in in conjunction with the budget for this one to look at. So I'm just saying, just don't look at general budget, you've got to look at all accounts. I think it has been looked at. I think it's been paired, but everything's on the table. And the grand list is flat, people. You're not. That's our biggest problem. That's, that's what's causing it. Your cost to do business has gone up. Your salary increases have gone up through contractual agreements. Your contractual agreements for health insurance, for other fixed costs, electricity, have all gone up in this budget. But your ability to raise money has not.
What about the possibility of our money coming from the Diamond Run Mall? Has that been somewhat projected in this budget, or?
No, it hasn't been. And I'll try to qualify that, John. I think it's unclear, Dr. Chris, as far as whether it's a year from construction or a year from opening as to a buzz. There's no dollars in the revenue budget for this, for the Diamond Run Mall, for this year, based on that, that if, I believe it doesn't kick in until the following year, that we wouldn't receive the money, based on the opening. Okay? Now, if that's wrong, that's certainly something that we will change within this budget process in dealing with the board of aldermen. But I think for fiscal year '97, I don't believe we're going to receive that money.
Ron, you spoke about cost of living raises. What about department heads? Were they level funded this year, or were they?
3 percent.
Pardon?
3 percent for all, all non-union employees, including the private heads, board of aldermen, everyone.
What kind of dollar figure is that?
Non-union, 3 percent, roughly $45,000, just over that. You have roughly 26 non-union employees for the city of Rutland. That's all divisions.
Will you come before the board? You will have, I know you usually do, but what's confusing to me for almost 14 years is when we look at this budget and we see X amount of dollars left in the budget, and we say, "Well, let's, next year, we'll cut some of this out," and then we find out that there's bills that still haven't come in, that this needs to be paid, just $5,000 here and $10,000 there, that you're expecting. You'll have all that to back up.
I personally didn't that this year, as far as anything under 40 percent unspent. And that's where I went through and cut. I had discussions with the private heads for the cuts that I did make in it. They may have changed them around. Rosemary is a prime example. I made some cuts in there because of her budget, but she very openly came in and told me, "Well, we're going to need this, we're going to need that." I got the same net effect as far as what I was looking for, but it's their budget. The private heads have to work within it. And I think you're going to find that we've made some changes in that, you know, this year. I hope you don't hear that. I heard it, and I couldn't believe it.
Any other questions? Sam?
I was going to say, would you want a motion referred to the corporate committee, sir? Do we need to, here's our, your first?
Yes. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any more discussion?
Some removed this evening.
Well, I'm just.
At any time. Don't wait for your committee meetings. Commit and talk to me if there's anything you want to know about this or anything else. I'm downstairs. And like I said, the mayor is anxious to sit down with you and your committees to go through this. That's his desire, and obviously, due to the circumstances, so.
One thing I would ask, committee chairmen, I try to, myself included, to try to notify the members of the committee and see if they're able to make the meetings. You've got, this is week, next week, for example, in my case, when people graduate from school.
You have until June 30, so.
Right.
Don't try to rush this in. Do it what's your schedule and, we'll accommodate you, if we can.
Okay. Alderman Boshap?
Yeah, Ron, you guys are looking at a possible early retirement package for a signature for, I heard that there's the city attorney and the treasurer and whatnot, might be working on a plan to offer early retirement to any and all Rutland City employees.
This came up early in our budget deliberations. It did come up, probably back in March, Chris, early March. Unfortunately, our pay structure in other areas do not afford the potential savings for somebody who goes out on early retirement. To give you an example, we have a three-step system that's our degree. If we were similar to the school department, that's a multiple-step system. So you have somebody who's aged between ages 58, 62, where you can offer an early retirement package. And you've got to be careful how you offer that, okay? Who's at the high end of the pay scale, it's getting $42,000 a year, and you bring on a new employee at 20 or 21 thousand, you certainly have some economic savings by offering an early retirement. The way our salary schedule works, the benefits, we do not, we're not afforded that same schedule or the same savings, okay? We were looking at, the mayor was very interested in that, as far as putting out, Chris and I, we ran the numbers on it. We discussed it, and basically, Chris, you can help me here, kind of said, "No, one, there's no economic savings as far as, dollar savings would be minimal compared if we had a better system of employees." And two, quite honestly, we were very concerned with age discrimination. There's no, I'm not going to hide anything, but that's exactly what it is. And that wasn't our intent. Our intent was to look at the budget and say, "Can we save money by offering a retirement package?" Certainly wasn't anything to do with age discrimination, but out there in this world today, you've got to be very careful with it. And we basically sat down as a group and said, "No, we're not going to offer that type of package." One, there was no savings. Two, there was a concern as far as age discrimination.
Second question, we did, I know this will come up in the committee meetings, but the, I know in some departments, there is a, at least it's, it's open for debate or debatable, that reductions in force might be appropriate. It's a matter of opinion, of course, but I can think of two departments where it.
I think in this, this budget, you have, I think there's two positions by attrition, possibly three, that were not filled. The mayor's instructions as far as reduction in force was the last resort. There would not be any layoffs unless we could, if we could not meet the 85 cent charter limit, then it would be layoffs. If we could meet the 85 cent charter limit, there would be no layoffs or reductions in force with any part of that. That was his desire, his intent on this budget. But there is reduction of staff based on attrition. We tried to plead three positions in here that were not given.
Because at some point, with the schools being their charter limit, we're getting our charter limit, at some point, we're going to have to go to the voters unless we can reduce expenditures or increase. There's the grand list, there's two choices. You're absolutely right. You have a choice to go and ask for an increase in spending limits. The other choice is to cut your budget and have reductions there. There's no way to get around that. You're absolutely right.
I mean, we can put it off this year, but it's, it's coming. Unless the, the grand list continues to decline or remain stagnant, you're absolutely right.
But all the projections are that we're here, every January, is that grand list is going to go up.
You certainly thought it was going to this year, sir. Though I can certainly stand there and say, "Due to meals and other factors that have come into play, this causes the grand list not to go up."
Is there any more debate? Fifth time, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
You'll be getting a hold of it, huh?
Please do.
Okay, the next would be reports of select committees. Is there any select committee reports?
Standing committee.
Yeah, standing committees? I'm sorry. Alderman Wilton?
I have a report from Community Development. Committee met May 28, 1996. Present were Alderman Davis- Present were Alderman Davis, Wilton Gillum, Chair, City Attorney Sullivan, Rutland Redevelopment Authority Director Sternberg. It's a motion, second, and it was passed. Alderman Davis moved, and I seconded, to authorize the mayor to enter a new agreement with Net Realty on Depot Parking Lot Lease for approval by the full board. It was passed in committee, nice and move.
Second.
Copy of the lease was in the packet.
Is there any discussion?
I'll come outside here in a minute. This is a pretty discussion, but it's a little bit at this time. If not, I'll go outside to rail.
My name's John Kenny, I'm a lawyer. I live in Clarendon, Vermont. I represent Pistols and Roses. Pistols and Roses is a Vermont partnership, and it owns properties along Merchants Row, commonly known as the Service Building and the Chittenden Bank Building. It also owns properties on Evelyn Street, which were owned by the Chittenden Bank and by National Service Supercenter, which it has acquired. Pistols and Roses is quite concerned about the lease that this board is being asked to approve. Its concerns are, the lease, as we all know, concerns the city's portion that the city owns of the Depot Park and the Depot Parking Lot. As I understand, the lease, reviewing the draft as submitted to the Act two fifty application, the city is conveying or leasing and amending its leases to have that property leased to the Teamsters for, I think it's approximately nineteen years, with an option to renew and also an option to purchase for one dollar. If you look, and I don't know whether you have them at the actual lease as drafted, which is called the amended and restated lease, I'd like to call your attention to a couple of paragraphs. If you look at paragraph two, use, it states, "The existing premises shall be used as a parking area for common use as Rutland Plaza tenant and customer parking, as they may exist from time to time." That is a drastic change from the previous leases. In the previous leases, the original lease entered in nineteen sixty-five between the city of Rutland and the Teamsters predecessor entitled Philip J. Levine, was very specific. And that said, that it would provide parking for the tenants of the Rutland Plaza and for the general public. That language, "for the general public," is being taken out of the amended and restated lease. What that means, as I read the lease, is that the city of Rutland is now giving to Net for the sum of one dollar, and Net has the right to purchase it as of tomorrow for one dollar. The right to buy and take that parking. Now, a little bit of history indicates that the parcels that comprised the Depot Parking Lot were purchased in nineteen fifty-three and nineteen fifty-eight. In fact, in nineteen fifty-three, there was a special election by the city of Rutland, and the ballot requested, "Shall the city council be authorized to purchase real estate of approximately fifty-eight thousand six hundred feet to be used as a municipal parking lot, with the bonds to be paid out of the city parking meter fund?" That vote was approved. A deed was signed in nineteen fifty-four to the city of Rutland, and in fact, there was an agreement between the city of Rutland and a number of banks. This agreement was recorded in the City Land Records in ninety-five at pages three oh two A through three oh two H. And it talks about a specific act of the legislature, that being number one sixty-two of the nineteen fifty-three acts of the General Assembly, authorizing the voters of the city of Rutland at a special meeting duly warned and held for the purpose, and the purpose being to acquire the land and convert the same into a public parking lot. Similarly, in nineteen fifty-eight, in the town meeting in nineteen fifty, city elections in nineteen fifty-eight on March fourth, the seventh ballot item was, "Shall rental bonds of the city, in the amount again of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars payable only from the parking meter fund, for the purpose of purchasing another fifty thousand square feet of land adjacent to the lot for the improvement, development, and extension of the municipal Depot Parking Lot?" Again, the voters approved that, and I submit to you knowing that it was going to be used for municipal and public purposes. What this board is being asked to do by this lease is sell that property for one dollar and make it strictly for personal use of one private entity. And why do we know that? Because if you look at the lease and the responses that were requested by the Act two fifty, District Environmental Commission, there are responses which require and state that the Net requires, and I will quote, "Net cannot emphasize strongly enough that as developer of the plaza, it must have flexibility with respect to the implementation and enforcement within the plaza. We respectfully suggest it would not be appropriate for the district commission to impose any type of parking restrictions or controls which would affect the plaza tenants or their customers. The public's not mentioned." Net is asking you to give them two acres in the middle of downtown Rutland for one dollar. Now, I understand that the city entered into an agreement in nineteen sixty-five that requires the city to pay X number of dollars for the common expenses of that parking lot. But the city and the people have paid for that lot. Now, to give up one hundred thousand square feet of downtown land for the benefit of only one private entity, I don't think is an appropriate use of the city's resources. Furthermore, I think, and your city attorney may disagree with you, I don't think you can legally sign this lease, which gives them an option which they could enforce. I don't think the city can legally sell this property or encumber it to Net so that Net could own it because it was purchased and worn for a specific purpose for the public. We have asked, in our negotiations with the city and with Net, they simply put in the language that this area would be open to the public, and that was refused. Now, they may tell you, Net may tell you, that we will never close it off. Well, if they will never close it off, why won't they put it in writing? Why won't they put it in a restriction? We don't think it's proper or legal, and we'd ask that you not sign that lease and have some further discussions with Net about making sure that the city property, that which was the city property, always remains open to the public in that purpose for which it was purchased. My client has approximately one hundred thousand square feet of commercial space that fronts on this parking lot. The assessed value of this property, of their property, is about, by the City Land Records, three point three million dollars. And there are similar properties, all along Merchants Row, going up Center Street, where people have used this lot for years. And I just don't think that we should be giving it away to one private entity to get it and keep it. And if Net sells the property and goes and sells the shopping center to whomever they want, that can be closed off, and these people will never see it. And you've given away two acres in downtown Rutland. We don't think that's proper. We'd ask that you not sign the lease.
Is there any questions? No, is there any questions? I can handle it.
Alderman Russo? Alderman Wilton, I apologize, the problem came up at work, and I was on my way over and ended up going back, so I wasn't at the committee meeting. Mr. Kenny brings up a point about us legally not being able to sign this. Could the city attorney explain that for me?
Under the charge of the board of Alderman have absolute authority to sell the lease land owned by the city. The vote back in nineteen fifty-three, nineteen fifty-eight was for the bonding requirements to pay for the land. And that does not restrict the future sale.
No, it's like, I know there are a couple of quick questions. Does this also shed us, A, the cost of maintaining the land? We're currently paying maintenance, which is about forty thousand, is that correct?
Between twenty-five to forty thousand dollars a year.
I guess we'll pay like thirty-five. And then, will we also be able to put this on the tax rolls?
Not immediately.
No?
If the exercise the option of purchase earlier than the twenty years, yes. Or at the end of twenty years, it'll be on the tax rolls.
So, over the next twenty years, at thirty-five thousand, picking that as an average number, we could see this, save the city seven hundred thousand dollars in expense for maintaining the land if they don't exercise the option to buy this. If they just continue to lease for twenty years, it's about thirty-five thousand a year for twenty years.
Yeah, in terms of maintenance, that will occur whether they exercise the option or not.
Okay, but if they exercise it tomorrow, that would save me then, because we would be getting tax money and not paying to maintain the land, could be double that, right?
It would be income and savings.
Income and savings. Okay.
Alderman Davis?
Could I just ask the city attorney to discuss the issue that we discussed in committee in regards to tenant and customer parking?
Yes, there was a lot of negotiation surrounding the paragraph two of the lease, paragraph number two, in regards to what the meaning of Rutland Plaza tenant and customer parking is. You can interpret that to mean Rutland Plaza customer parking, but you also can interpret that to be customer parking period. They had requested that it be only Rutland Plaza tenant parking and Rutland tenant or Rutland Plaza customer parking. We do not agree with that. We requested that it be and downtown customer parking. They had reservations about being specific about downtown customer parking. There's issues associated with the Act two fifty permit that if there is specific language in regards to downtown parking in this particular amended and restated lease, that it could cause problems through the Act two fifty process. Previously, in the Act two fifty, we made sure that the nine hundred and ninety-five spaces that are presently available in the parking lot are for the Plaza parking. So it does affect the Act two fifty proceedings, and we did negotiate this particular language, and our intent is that it would be for general downtown parking. If they do purchase the property, if they exercise the option, or at the end of the twenty years, it is transferred to the Plaza, they will be owners of that property without any restrictions as to how they can regulate their property. So they can restrict that if they deem it necessary in the future to not allow general public parking.
So technically, if I was a customer of the Chittenden Bank and I parked there, I was leaving. But if I was an employee of the Chittenden Bank and was going to be there long-term, then that is not the parking I should be utilizing.
Well, what is going to begin in terms of the restrictions and limitations in the parking lot, is my understanding is there will be time limitations, and there won't be, is this person getting out of the car, walking over to Walmart, walking over to TJ Maxx, wherever they may be shopping? If they get out of their car, walk across the street, go to the Chittenden Bank, and stay within the timeframe that is allowed, there will be a lot of park there. And the intent going into the project is that this will be open and available, and the restrictions as to time limitations should be sufficient. If they are not, then Net Properties wants to have it available to them, and Walmart wants it available if they're going to stay downtown, to restrict parking further, whether it be through stricter time limitations or other means. What Kmart was in there, they never found that necessary, and they don't believe it will be necessary under this arrangement either.
Alderman Russo?
Is it possible they can restrict the use to the public by putting up gates and then either pay a fee to use the area or free parking by showing some type of receipt from a...
Like a validation?
Yeah. From a business in the Plaza, could they do that?
Yeah.
Could they do that?
We have argued this with Net as negotiations has transpired. We were adamant that, under the present terms of the lease, the way it was negotiated and the way we understand it, no, they could not do that. But if this lease is signed, there's no reason that if tomorrow they decide that they need exclusive parking in the Plaza lot, that they could exercise their option and go through a validation process, go through a voucher process, whatever process they may go through, for that type of parking. Now, the city has taken, in the parking issue, there will be a public hearing tomorrow, by the way, and everybody's invited to go to that here, beginning at nine o'clock, in which a lot of the issues of parking will be addressed, talking about long-term parking and short-term parking that is available to the city. But yes, there can be restrictions in the Plaza.
Alderman Russo?
Is the, just to be clear about this, at least in my mind, is the reason the city wants to give up control of this property space that we talked about?
Nineteen.
With present...
In that particular lot, there's city-owned spaces, I believe, roughly, anywhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred spaces in the Depot Parking Lot, because it goes into the last section, but I'm not sure exactly the...
So if the idea, the city is willing to give up control to bring Walmart in, be cut and dried, so if they would sign the lease, so, is that, just to be clear and simplistic?
Yes, that's definitely part of the process, absolutely. Plus, we're getting the, I mean, the way this was negotiated and conveyed to the committee is that, again, what Sam had brought up earlier was the elimination of the maintenance charges of twenty-five to forty thousand dollars a year, the potential to be on the tax rolls in the future, and to, you know, part of the price to pay for the development of that particular lot to increase the rent less.
And was this, was this particular aspect of the negotiations with Net or Walmart critical?
Absolutely.
So, in essence, we're going to give up, we're talking about the Chittenden Bank and the Service Buildings, employees and some customers that bring Walmart into town. Okay, you can be, let's be clear about it.
Yeah. Let me first say, we're not against Walmart. It's not an issue with Walmart. We're here for fairness. The Teamsters are a taxpayer of the city. Pistols and Roses is a taxpayer. We don't see why the city has to give up its property for purely a private profit motive, and that is for the Teamsters to have a tenant for their property. They already pay taxes on that property. We're not opposed, and we were not opposed to parking restrictions. We think those are appropriate. We think that there should be a time limit. What we are suggesting to you is that the public should have the right and be guaranteed that right to use that spot, whether it's a customer of the Chittenden Bank, whether it's a customer who wants to run into the coffee shop under the meat building, whether it's a person who wants to go to the state employee office building, go to another bank or one of the stores on Merchants Row, on Center Street. All of these property owners, all pay for the redevelopment authority taxes, and we think that they should at least have that parking area open to them and to their customers, under whatever restrictions are appropriate. And, you know, the three-hour parking, I think, is very appropriate. We don't think, we're not here for our tenants to park. We want our customers to park there, that the people come there. And we don't want the Teamsters to say, sorry, we've now got our lot, we've now taken a hundred thousand square feet. We've now taken 100,000 square feet. How many cars we can put in there, but we're keeping it all to ourselves." And the city and the rest of downtown, tough one, and we're going to go to validation.
Just to give you a perspective, at my business, I have to pay for my customer parking. Okay, I pay for it. The city, in essence, is giving, if you want to call it, giving this parking to Net. It's part of, it's part of a business deal. The bottom line is money. So, I don't think your customers, I don't think, you don't subsidize my customers' parking, so to be fair about it, you should purchase your own parking for your customers. Even though your customers may have had free parking for 50 years, a lot of people, 50, 20, 10, whatever, I have to pay for my customers' parking, so maybe you need to cut a deal with NET or make the city an offer or whatever, because I don't think that I should subsidize or the rest of the people should subsidize your customers' parking. I don't ask them to subsidize my customers' parking. So, to be fair about it, we're talking about who's going to subsidize who's parking. Nobody should subsidize your parking or your customers' parking. We're offering as part of a business deal to bring in a large, to bring in Walmart. It's a deal. It's a business deal. It comes down to money. You guys happen to be the losers in the deal, but maybe there's another way to, and granted, in particular, the parking is, the Chittenden, the whole Merchants Row, you're losing premier parking. So it's a tough one. What do you do? Do you say, "No, we're not going to give it away and lose Walmart," or do you guys make a deal with NET and pay them a fee, which would be reasonable, to free up some spaces up front? I mean, that's an option. I don't know what, but I don't think you should have free customer parking if you've had it for 20 years, so maybe you need to pay for it.
Well, I can only go back in history, especially my memory is that originally, the depot lot was paid for. It certainly was paid for out of the parking meter fund, and if I remember the depot lot, there used to be parking meters in it that belonged to all the other lots around town. So, and we're not objecting to that, but I'm concerned, and I think this board ought to be concerned, with all of the sudden gates going up across there and you not being allowed in. Have parking meters in the city section. That's fine. Have it paid for. Remember, there was a lease signed, and the city made an agreement in 1965 because it wanted to have that shopping center there, and it agreed that it was going to pay its share for this parking area. That was the city's, what the city wanted to do for downtown. And now the city says, "We don't want to do it for downtown anymore. We only want it for Walmart."
Alderman, Wilton?
Our position in this, the way I see it, is that we are the trustees of the city. A long time ago, it was probably prudent to purchase that land and make it parking as it was, but that was 40 years ago. Times have changed. Needs have changed. It's probably time for us to get out of the real estate business. You heard Treasurer Graves. We've got a budget problem. We can save some money. I suggest we do it, and I move the question.
Motion is to move the question. Is there a second? Okay, motion feels a lack of a second. Alderman, nurse, if you have a...
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One of them, if Chris or Alderman, sorry, Attorney Canny can answer. Did you say that they're currently paying taxes on this land, the Teamsters?
They're not paying taxes, not on the city-owned property, on their own property.
Okay, because they're not on this lot?
No.
And that's the mathematics I was working earlier. Again, if the average were $32,000 a year that we're paying to maintain the property over the 20 years, that's $640,000 in savings to the city. If they exercise their option tomorrow, and someone once mentioned $30,000 a year in taxes, that land would be worth, you're looking at $600,000 a year over 20 years, so now you're looking at $1,240,000 savings to the city. Again, this is rough numbers scratching here in the corner of the lease. One other thing I just want to share, when this came up, I think about a year ago last April, I had some people ask me about it, and I actually called Bob Rechner, and Bob really brought up a logical point. If someone has a husband and wife and two children, pull into that parking lot and run into the barber shop to get their kids a haircut, and they come out and find their car towed or ticketed or something, they're not going to go to Walmart again. They're not even going to go into near the building or what. He says, "We need to be good neighbors. We need to allow someone to go to the barber shop and while at the barber shop, run into Walmart and do their shopping, and then go back and pick up their kids." He said, "We want to be good neighbors." And bottom line, I don't think Act 250 would allow them to put razor fence and block that thing off, but I just wanted to clarify my understanding and the aesthetics issue of that. Thank you.
Alderman, nurse?
Mike, what my response to that would be, play Delia. If the Net want, Net want to be good neighbors, why were they averse to putting some type of clause in here to allow for an hourly free parking limit and no validation? Was that brought up to Net?
The complexities of this particular lease deal with the spaces that need to be available for the Act 250. The Plaza requires either 965 spaces or 995 spaces. The original permit indicated that that Plaza parking lot, now we're dealing with displaced vehicles from the Plaza that we have to find spaces for. Okay, the displaced vehicles are long-term parkers, basically, that are presently parking in the Plaza. In order for the numbers for the Plaza to work as a Plaza, okay, in the square footage that's available there, they need available so many spaces. If you start taking those spaces away, okay, you start taking away, it's a numbers game. You start taking the numbers away from the Plaza parking lot, you can't, you won't have enough spaces for the Plaza. Now, and I should reiterate, the intent, and we hear gates coming up with validation and closing off the Plaza parking lot, is there a risk that that can happen? Yes, there's a risk. Is that going to happen? My understanding and the intent throughout the negotiations is that it's not going to happen, that people are going to continue to park over there. There'll be enforcement in terms of the time limitations, maybe a lot more strict than it was previously, so that if you go over the three hours, you'll get a ticket. If they reduce that time limit to two hours because they find three hours is too much, and you're over the two hours, you will get a ticket. But the idea behind this process, is there a risk, absolutely, through this lease, if there's a risk, they could go over there and gate it? Is that their intention? Is that what they're going to do tomorrow? Is that what they're going to do when the Plaza is finally fully tenanted? No. Our understanding at this point in time is that is not going to happen. They need those spaces for the Plaza. If there's spaces available there, then people are going to be able to park in that space. So, yes, is it a calculated risk associated with, could they do this? Yes, they could. But again, I repeat, it's not the intent through these negotiations that they're going to be going over and closing out that Plaza for other customer parking for downtown.
Chris, who, two questions. Who would be doing the ticketing?
The enforcement and restrictions will be Net. We will not be paying for an extra officer to go to the lot and to the enforcement.
But the tickets would be from the city?
They'll be municipal tickets. An authorization of the person that will be issuing the tickets in the Plaza, so we will be getting the fines and fees associated with the parking of the, or at least the fines.
Second question's a matter of procedure. Is it imperative that this is voted on tonight? Because we're looking at...
That's right.
Six members here. In order for this to pass, all six members have to be unanimous.
I'd rather have a vote tonight, and if it doesn't pass, then we can take it up to the reading to the region possibly.
John. Alderman, Stafford?
Has this been before any community development committee or anything?
Yes, it's been there a long time.
Yes, Bob, we passed it.
Have you reviewed the particular?
Yes, we've met with Chris and Matthew several times.
We talked about all of the plans.
In its entirety as it is to be?
Yes, sir.
You have.
Alderman, both here, one more time.
Is there any, I'd like to deal with, I know where, John. I see where you're coming from, in that it's foolish on one hand to acquiesce totally, if that's the right word, to NET and put the, put the kibosh on good business in operation on Merchants Row, mostly Merchants Row but Center Street. Is there an opportunity? I have no concerns with employee parking. That's, if I was, if I was the Chittenden Bank president or Mark or Ned Pike, the employees wouldn't, they'd already be forced to park elsewhere as part of their employment, but for customer parking, what would be the, I would like, I would like to see the city give the present businesses on Merchants Row an option to purchase or whatever, at least a minimal number of parking spots, whether the sidewalk is, I mean, whether we're talking increasing, I'm not sure about the logistics of why the street is, but increased parking on Merchants Row, moving the sidewalk, a row in, allowing the Chittenden Bank or whoever to purchase 20 or 30 prime customer parking spots, or let Ned Pike and Mark and whoever else, give them an option to purchase. I'm only concerned with customer parking for Chittenden Bank, customer parking for Kenny Pike, customer. The Center Street, from my, my experience on Center Street, if I try to go into a Center Street business, there's usually parking on Center Street. Chittenden Bank, so I would like to see somehow, I'm sure, you know, this is throwing, throwing a wrench into the present negotiations or whatnot with NET, but I'd like to see other budding landlords have an opportunity to purchase some parking, purchase some parking, or the city going, doing something to, you know what I'm saying?
I understand.
I agree.
I'd like to respond to that if I could.
Go ahead.
Without devoting all of the negotiations, your city attorney and I have had a number of discussions in the past week about such an issue. We have made some proposals in that regard, and quite honestly, as of right now, Net has not responded. Whether they are going to, we have no idea. But we had thought we had come to something that had made some sense, and we were, I will tell you, we were going to pay something for the right to have parking allowed in the area that Net wants to purchase from the city.
How many spaces do you feel, you feel you need not just...
I was only, I was representing, I'm representing my client.
Right.
So we were talking about 30 spaces. We were, but that's, I mean, those are negotiations that I would prefer not to get into at this time, but the answer is yes, we were, we were attempting to do that.
I think your question has been answered. Alderman, Wilton?
I was going to say, this last conversation has gotten away off track from where we should be with this issue.
Alderman, Stafford?
Okay. The city entered into a negotiation with the barbell for people in the barbell to have a few parking places on the front side of there. Aren't they, they're still in effect, aren't they? That's what I'm...
Yes.
Are they still in effect, Chris?
The parking spaces.
Yeah.
All front in the city lot, yeah?
Yeah.
We gave them some over here in the police department lot.
Then it doesn't mention a lease or anything.
No.
Then are they aware of it?
The barbell, yes, they've received the...
Net is aware of it.
Aware of what?
Of several places for the barbell.
The barbell spaces, any dedicated spaces for the barbell or on the street or the city parking in the...
When the original lease, we had some over there. What I'm saying is...
There are no, there are no dedicated spaces in the depot parking lot for the barbell.
We've given these out back to them.
That's correct. It was a transfer of...
There was in the original lease.
The original, and then when, excuse me, just to clarify this, and we are getting off the subject. When the barbell house was built over here, we renovated into the barbell house. We had to give those spaces up, and we had to give these spaces back here in the police, police department lot, and the spaces on the north side of Washington Street to the barbell house to make up for the spaces over in the parking lot.
Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. But there was spaces there in the original.
Okay, is there any more questions without keep going around and around?
I just got one more that's not legal already. Not a lawyer, so I don't understand some of the things here, but I'm just going to ask a question outright. If the city, I'd rather, if Net exercises their option and purchases, would there be any way to write into the deed on the purchase from us to them, I don't see it, something effective? You got to give three-hour free parking to whomever and whatever, and then at that point, you can charge it to the impact?
Not under the terms of this lease.
But if that is inserted into this lease, it can, that be thrown into a deed possibly?
That's a possibility. The problem again is when you, when you leave it open to the public, it causes problems with the Act 250 process. I should point out that the current, the current lease that we are in with, with Net goes to, I believe, 2047, and so the savings are doubled. They aren't the 20-year, this restated amended lease. Currently, we're under an obligation of going to the year, and I may be mistaken, on 2047. John will correct me if I'm wrong, that that's how our savings will, they extend to that year. Okay, so it's not just the 20-year restated amended lease that we save. We save that because we're amending our obligation to pay the maintenance fee, which extends to 2047, so it's closer to a 50-year savings rather than that 20-year period that we're talking about. Our obligation, again, to pay the maintenance goes on beyond the 20 years.
But the $3 million deals that remain to it may not...
Well, the numbers on the revenue do not change, but the obligation to pay on the maintenance actually increases as, beyond the 20-year period. So if they don't exercise their option within the 20 years, at the 20-year period, they would own the property, and we wouldn't have had paid, paid maintenance during that period of time, under the current lease that goes on for about 50 years.
Everyone's had at least twice, two options to speak, as she, Alderman Stafford, raised his hand.
Is it imperative that we vote on this tonight?
He's already answered that.
I understood it from Chris that it is imperative due to the Act 250 hearing tomorrow. Is that right?
That's correct. This has been submitted through the Act 250 process, vote call vote.
The vote call vote has been requested. This time, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Chairman Caserino, do you want me to reread the motion?
Yeah, she's got it.
Yeah, go ahead.
The motion is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Net Realty on the depot parking lot lease.
Okay.
Laura?
No.
Carusa?
Yes.
Boachan?
No.
Stafford?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Would you?
Okay, by a vote of four to two, the vote is failed because it doesn't have the majority of six, motion is failed, the majority of six at this time. Okay.
There is, there's another...
Another...
Motion to come out of community development, I hope this one doesn't take us long. We would like to move into Charter and Urgents Committee, the issue of the city master plan project. This passed three to nothing in committee, and I shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any debate on this, Alderman? Any debate? Okay, Alderman, favorite, the motion to refer to Charter and Urgents Committee to ensure the city master plan, signify by saying aye. Aye. Allo opposed? Okay, it passes. Is that it? One minute?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm also representing the parking committee report, which was in the packet. You have the minutes of the Rutland City Parking Advisory Committee as of May 26... You have the minutes of the Rutland City Parking Advisory Committee as of May 22, 1996. I just want to highlight, it's, sort of goes along with community development, there is a meeting again this Wednesday, June 5th, right here in council chambers, as well as the Act 250 hearing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other standing committees that have a report? Okay, we'll move on, reports of select committees, oh, I'm sorry, did I finish?
Select.
Standing committees?
No, select.
Select committees, Alderman Berusa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. At 5:35 Thursday, May 30, the inter municipal agreements committee met in council chambers, the city hall, President Alderman Davis, Stafford, there are so other present staff, Attorney Brislin, Public Works Commissioner, City Engineer Warren Connor, David O'Brien, Executive Director of Rutland Economic Development Corporation Reddick, Richard Guile, President of Kelo Controls and Rutland Town Selectman John Paul Fagnon. Following two items were on the agenda. Item number one, Alderman Davis made a motion, seconded by Alderman Stafford, to grant tax stabilization to a building addition for the Kelo Controls facility at the airport industrial park pending a similar tax stabilization agreement from the town of Clarton. The vote was unanimous. Therefore, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a tax stabilization for Kelo Controls' new addition to their building pending a similar tax stabilization agreement from the town of Clarton.
Second. Okay, is there any debate on this matter? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman Berusa?
And then just the other item, there was no, I don't think formal action, but there's a discussion of a water agreement between Rutland City and Rutland Town. City Engineer Connor mentioned a recent cooperative effort between the city and town regarding water hookups on Windcrest Road. Mr. Connor and Mr. Brislin asked for a consensus from the committee as to whether they should draft a simple contract to simultaneously give to both the committee and to the town select board for input, then bring their input to the full board of Alderman for their input. Selectman Fagnon added that he believed the town would only be enough to enter into an agreement in perpetuity or other long-term basis. Committee did not take the formal vote but felt that they would support pursuing this issue further. Meeting adjourned at 6:04 PM. That's fully submitted. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there any other select committee reports? Okay, if not, we'll move on to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. The first is a letter from McLeod to President Saggy.
Move to refer to rep committee.
Second. Motion was to refer to rep committee. Is there any debate? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Second item is temptation station, conditions of use of city sidewalk.
Move to grant the exception of item number nine, requesting a temporary barricade.
Okay. Motion was made to grant the exception and seconded. Is there any debate? Hearing none and seeing one, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, the next one would be the Center Stage Deli, request to use city sidewalk.
Move to the approval.
Okay, it's moved to, for the approval and seconded. Is there any debate?
Sharon, with those conditions?
Yes, and I think they've already received the policy, so are the ten restrictions that we put on the other businesses that use city sidewalks.
Okay, will the seconder accept that? Sam? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, the fourth item is Scott La Vienna, request to use city sidewalk. What is your pleasure?
That was a crap thing.
That was a thing that Mangiano or whoever, I think.
Well, is it, I don't know, there's number two and three.
We didn't want Center Street.
One with Center Stage Deli and the other one is. Merchant's Row. Okay.
Oh, you're right. Yeah. Different business.
This is bus station one.
It's approved by Genssens.
I'll move to the approval with the same ten conditions.
Second, with the ten conditions, is there any debate?
That's where this is.
It's the old bus terminal box.
Okay.
Remember the restaurant that used there years ago?
Yep.
When we were kids?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next would be nine ex petition for buried cable, Merchant's Row, Center Street, Strong Avenue. What is your pleasure?
Authorize Commissioner Public Works to sign with the, and approve with the six standard conditions.
Second, or President Sam.
Oh, you want the board president? Okay. Saying amended to the board president.
It's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Number seven, Great Outdoors, wait a minute, back up. Number six, NET Rutland Plaza, 250 information.
Receive and file.
Receive and file, it's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Number seven, the Great Outdoors Trading Company, wetlands, wetlands conditional use. What is your pleasure?
Receive and file.
Second.
Receive and file, second, is there any debate? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Number eight, VLCT Current Use Taxation Special Session. What is your pleasure?
Oh.
Coffee schoolwork, seems to be their problem.
I think I'll refer to community development.
Okay, the motion is to refer to community development. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to the second, is there any debate? Has anybody figured out what it is?
Yeah, it's the current use problem, there's so much.
Why we lost state aid money.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, a motion is now in order to go into Board of Control Commissioners?
Second.
It's been moved to the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. The first order of business is DLC, for means public or control board decision for an air conditional license.
Move through, receive and place on file.
Okay, but this is for a conditional license, is that right?
No, it's a board decision, granted them a conditional.
Board decision, granted them one, okay.
I just have a question of the city clerk. As far as the license granted, waiting to see if Mr. Chapman is convicted or not, at that time, will this board be notified of the decision? No.
Can I ask?
Your decision.
If the condition that he's convicted, then.
Okay. And your motion was to receive and place on file? It was seconded? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next one are violation letters for tweets of Uncle Sam's and Ross Park.
Move to receive and place on file.
Second.
Okay, is there any debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? All those saying no? Ayes have it.
That's not on the agenda.
Okay, we have another license that's not on the agenda. For Fort Knox, partnership is Clemming Company, 51 Wayo Street.
Motion to circulate for signature, right?
This is the, yes, that's an order, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this looks like it's 51 Wayos, is that the old Clemms kitchen?
Right. Looks like it.
Okay. Is there any debate? If not, need a motion to circulate for signature?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to pass it around.
Second.
All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this point, I will ask the actimir, if he would also sign this, because I think we need definitely seven signatures. Motion is now in order to go out into Board of Control Commissioners? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next would be reports and letters from department heads and officials. Assessor, request for an A B, Mayor Hearn, hearing for Eileen Anderson.
Move to refer to the city assessor.
Well.
Move to send.
It's from him.
It's from him. I think he can take care of that.
Four, seven fifteen and on the seventeenth.
Right. We need to, you have three people do this, is that correct?
I believe it's a request for VA exemption, so I don't know that we need to inspect the property.
Okay, it's, it's on the service?
Right.
Okay, you got that?
Seventeenth to seven fifteen.
Yeah, and when you see that, I don't know if it's notified? Okay, all those in favor, the motion signify, second, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we move on to unfinished business.
Chairman Caserino, when we discussed the Vermont lead of cities and towns issue, I neglected to notice that on our desk is a request to sign a resolution in this regard to get information to the governor, letting him know that towns and cities really aren't happy with the way the current use issue was dealt with at the end of the legislative session. I would move that we circulate one copy for signatures.
Okay.
Second.
It moved to the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
We started here. Oh, okay.
Is there anything else on unfinished business?
I have two other issues. The first would be, I would like to refer to the traffic committee, a potential issue of looking into a traffic light in a crosswalk where Vernon meets North Main Street.
Second.
Dull background on why I'm making that motion.
Yes.
A week and a half or two weeks ago, when that young man was, was killed on North Main in a car accident, traffic was blocked off of seven for quite a long time due to the severity of the accident. And I did go up to find out what was taking a long time. I did talk to one of the traffic officers who was down at where Vernon meets North Main and talking with him about it. He told me that he has written 120 speeding tickets, just he himself, since January 1st on that section of North Main. Several business owners have expressed to me in that same area that the traffic moves extremely fast, it's extremely dangerous to cross Route 7 right there, and there are a lot of pedestrians from that general neighborhood seeking to cross seven to go to sewers, to return videotapes at Video World.
Give a bus stop across the street on that corner.
Pardon?
Give a bus stop on that corner.
Yes, this is correct. So I think there are pedestrian needs and there's, and there's also a concern that I have that, that a light could possibly slow the traffic down a little bit. You know, there are houses and kids and dogs and everything very close to that road, so I'd like to move that to traffic.
Okay, is there any debate? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Anything else?
From the community development meeting of last week, we did go into executive session to get an update on several issues. I don't know if that is necessary tonight to, to go into that with full board.
Well, I do have to request an executive session on litigation. It shouldn't take long. I don't know if that would get up here, but on the Moore versus the city case, pending litigation, I do need to speak to the board about that litigation. I may bring you up to date on that. And I'd also, given the vote this evening on the lease, I do need to talk to the board on the Act 250 process and get some direction on that as well.
Okay, we'd like to hold on for a few minutes before we show that.
Okay, I'll hold my motion.
Anything else on our unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions and new business. Okay, do you have a motion to go into executive session?
That we go into executive session?
Second.
For? For the purpose of discussing the litigation that Attorney Sullivan wants to bring us up to date on and also the Act of 50 hearing tomorrow.
Here's a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.